Yes, ma'am. Dr. Chase.
The President.
Ms. Decatur.
Here.
Ms. Egan.
Here.
Ms. Hazard.
Here.
Ms. Healy.
Here.
Mr. McCosker.
Here.
Ms. Young is absent, and I'm sure you have a quorum.
All right. Would you please stand for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do we have a motion to approve the agenda?
Madam Chair, I have a motion to approve the agenda with the move of, I apologize, I thought I had it right in front of me, of the consent items regarding CIP advisory committees. I ask that we defer that to the next meeting to provide till September 5th for people to apply as would.
Thank you. Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Stewart, and congratulations to our students, and thank you for all that hard work this summer. That brings us to citizen comments. Mr. McCosker?
Speakers shall identify themselves by name, address, and organizational affiliation if the spokesperson represents an organization. Speakers shall also announce the purpose topic of their comments. Three minutes shall be allotted to speakers. The chairman reserves the right to restrict the total citizen comment received at any particular meeting to a predetermined maximum number of minutes approval with approval of the board. Citizen comments, which are profane, abusive, and which threatens the imminent physical harm, shall be ruled out of order by the chairman. Although the board provides the opportunity for citizen comment, individuals designed to register complaints against division employees or division programs, services, or activities may also utilize the procedures outlined in Stafford County Policy 1113. Public comments.
Thank you, Mr. McCosker. We have one person who signed up for citizen comments this evening, and that is Michelle Goshorn. If anyone else would like to address the board, please come down after Ms. Goshorn. And after you've given us the comments, there's a sign-in sheet for your name and address. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Michelle Goshorn. I live at 20 Fletcher Drive in the Falmouth District. I'm here to address what I saw occur at the last board meeting. When I first started advocating for the schools over 10 years ago, Meg Bomke advised me that I would get further with honey than vinegar. Let's see how that goes. By trade, I am a data analyst. The program I work on has a budget and a headcount larger than your school system. I intimately understand the power of big numbers and how to use numbers to tell a story. It's why I strongly believe in agreed-upon methodology when looking at numbers to ensure that everyone is on the same page. Additionally, when I served on several South Stafford Elementary redistricting committees, additionally, I have served on those committees. Just two years ago during the Falmouth redistricting, I urged many of you to use program capacity versus design capacity because of the misleading perception that design capacity gives. I was very encouraged earlier this year when you adopted a capacity methodology that not only used program capacity but also incorporated space use information provided by the principals. This approach is what in each redistricting committee that I served on, that's what those principals did, and it was enormously productive to the process. Last month, for reasons I cannot begin to understand, you decided to publicly question that adopted methodology and turned down $100,000 from the Board of Supervisors. First of all, when the Board of Supervisors hands you money, you say "thank you," period. For some of you not to understand how that allocation worked outside the budget process is unfathomable to me. You missed the chance to help two schools that drastically needed your help. Two schools that we knew based on figures in June were way over capacity. Let me make something clear. Mrs. Hazard didn't get that money. If having one of y'all asked the Board of Supervisors for money gave us money, we'd be in much better position. The citizens of this county, both in Hartwood and out of Hartwood, put pressure on the Board of Supervisors to address a problem, and they responded. Why didn't you? My boys don't go to these schools, but this is my community. These are my friends that have children at these schools, and my friends who work at these schools. I have personally heard what they go through on a daily basis. And let me tell you, redistricting in this county has never fixed anything. And if you think it's going to fix it this year, you're kidding yourself. For years, I have laid the blame at the state of our schools at the Board of Supervisors' feet due to underfunding. Last month, you gave them fuel for the fire of their never-ending political spin. Spin that many of us have been spent years combating with your Board of Supervisors counterparts, our friends and family, and on social media. You called out Central Office staff and in general just made a circus of that meeting. Let me speak frankly. As a board, you need to get your act together, and you need to do it quickly. If you don't, you will continue to lose funding. You will continue to lose teachers. You will continue to lose public support. You will continue to lose superintendents every three years, and eventually, you're going to lose your seat on the board. Thank you.
Paul Waldowski, Eight Picket Lane. Boy, I didn't have no fire, but now I got some fire. Math is one of my key aspects, and 2021 is real redistricting, so wake up and smell the roses. Yep, my new bumper sticker says Waldowski, and it's W-A-L-D-O-W in capital letters. The S-K-I, of course, is for skills, knowledge, and imagination. 2019, and the second line will say "just to annoy you." So you don't know which board I'm going to run for. Maybe none of them. But I don't like $226,000 superintendents with a $1 million package who's going to be gone in three years. He could be gone in two because he'd be eligible for Social Security at 62. I waited until I was 64 and a half. In two days, I'll be 66. Mark that date, August 16th. In 1977, Elvis died on my 25th birthday, and I was all shook up. Ha ha, I'm a Beatles fan. Now, one of my personal pet peeves on this board is the school year. I told you, I've been mentoring kids in my neighborhood because, you know, some of their parents just don't understand why learning how to drive a John Deere is a really good thing. You get some real-life experience, even if you drive it into the ditch. That's what I call experience. If he didn't hit anything, he wouldn't have learned anything. That's the whole part of being in education. And another thing the citizens need to know about redistricting, you know, historic Falmouth has an Arby's. They now have a 7-Eleven. And a Dunkin' Donuts is coming down Route 17, so make sure when you're heading west, young man or young woman, you can get a donut. That's in the Falmouth Historic District, but it's in the George Washington Voting District. Golly. Now, who would gerrymander this county? Each of you have gotten my letter to the Justice Department that I wrote in 2011. I'm working very, very hard with others to show that we only need five school board members, and one of them will be a member-at-large. Not so seven of you go in a back room and figure out, whose turn is it to be chairman or vice chairman? Hello, we need a real representative of the whole county. Man, my next speech will be even better. It'll be about Snow White.
Is there anyone else that we'd like to address the board? Seeing none, we'll close the public comment period. Come back to the board for the board committee reports. Does anyone have a committee report?
Go ahead.
Ms. Dr. Chase.
So, the Finance and Budget Committee met on July 23rd and August 2nd. At the July 23rd meeting, we elected officers for the coming year. I agreed to serve as chair, and Ms. Decatur agreed to serve as vice chair. We reviewed and updated the committee bylaws. The modified bylaws should be coming to the full board for information and action in the near future. We received a presentation on the county's proposed changes for the joint CIP policy. We were all a bit reluctant to make major changes before Dr. Kizner comes on board and has an opportunity to weigh in. We began developing the FY '20 budget calendar, which will be presented in information later tonight. And then we discussed the need for the entire board to meet to develop our budget priorities for FY '20. We're having some trouble finding a date, but a few of the topics that we might want to consider for budget priorities are looking at the salary scale for administrative assistants and other administrative positions, such as principals and assistant principals. We might revisit the teacher's salary scale. Dr. Benson noted that once we had gotten all of our teachers to the median of the market, we might want to adjust our goal, perhaps to be higher than the median of the market, or explore whether our comparison counties are the appropriate comparison counties. There has been an interest in learning more about how school site fundings are being spent. We might want to explore the need for some additional support positions at Central Office. Do we want to retrofit school buses with air conditioning as a result of changing our school start date next year? And we were hoping to get a report on how early childhood special education services are being handled in other counties. So hopefully, we can get a meeting together to establish budget priorities before the September 11th meeting, when we're supposed to present them. Thanks.
Thank you, Dr. Chase. Any other committee reports?
Just mentioning that on Monday, we have the legislative meeting at 1:30.
Nothing else? All right. Then that brings us to board member comments. Ms. Egan, would you like to start?
I'll defer my time.
Dr. Chase?
Just wanted to say I appreciate all the work that our Central Office staff and principals have been doing to get ready for a smooth start to the school year.
Mr. McCosker?
Differ.
Ms. Decatur?
I have no comments this evening. Thank you.
Ms. Hazard?
No comments.
Well, I will join the crowd and say, "no comments." That'll move us along. Mrs. Kale, do you have any superintendent comments? Acting superintendent comments?
Yes, I'll break the cycle. I do. It's an exciting time because staff is preparing for the beginning of the school year. Some of our students are already back with fall athletics and activities. In addition, we conducted our Stafford Leadership Academy last Tuesday through Thursday. We're extremely fortunate to have Dr. Lavelle Brown and Charlene Green present, I mean, excuse me, to present about diversity, equity, and implicit bias. They received great reviews by all. In addition, we also had crisis training for all of our administrators, and we were happy to have Dr. Kizner here last Thursday to meet and greet all the building-level and central office administrators. Our new teacher institute begins next week. We're excited to meet our new teachers and welcome them to our Stafford family. On Monday and Friday, they will work in their buildings. Tuesday through Thursday, they will be at Colonial Forge High School. Dr. Kizner will also be there to welcome our new teachers Tuesday morning. We are excited to welcome all of our teachers and staff back August 27th as we look forward to the start of the 2018-2019 school year as we empower and inspire all learners to thrive. We know it will be a fantastic school year, so we're looking forward to it.
Thank you. And Mrs. Kale, thank you for including the progress in hiring teachers in that weekly update. It's good to see those numbers go down in terms of the vacancies. Do you have any information for us at this point on the enrollments? Are we on target for enrollments this year, or have they gone?
We have looked at elementary enrollments. We were looking at those today. We're still looking at middle and high school. Some of the enrollments, as we're looking at for classes, we're looking at some. They're evening out. There may be a few places where we need to maybe move some folks, et cetera. And there are a couple of schools that are in need of positions.
Okay. Thank you. All right. That brings us to the consent agenda. Do we have a motion to approve the consent agenda? And this deleted action deferred it until the next month. So the consent agenda minus 8.04.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Egan. Do we have a second?
Second.
Second by, was that Ms. Hazard? Ms. Hazard, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed. Motion carries unanimously. Ms. Kale, do you have any announcements for us?
Yes, I'm very proud to announce five assistant principal positions that have been appointed. First of all, I think tonight, we have the new assistant principal for Stafford Elementary School, Caitlin McClung. She can stand. Ms. McClung has taught math at Rodney Thompson Middle School since 2010. For the past five years, she has served as the math lead, department head at Thompson. In addition, she has served as the girls' track coach and National Junior Honor Society advisor. We welcome her in her new position at Stafford Elementary School. We also, I think, have with us tonight the new assistant principal for Stafford Middle School, Jill Bryant. She can stand, so everybody can see you. Ms. Jill Bryant will assume the position of 10-month assistant principal at Stafford Middle School. She has been a family and consumer sciences teacher at Brookpoint High School since 2003. She has played an active role in Brookpoint's Renaissance Program to help improve school climate and culture. In addition, last school year, she was appointed to lead Brookpoint's Advanced Ed Accreditation Review. Ms. Bryant has also served as summer school administrator at Brookpoint. Congratulations, Jill. And next, we have the new assistant principal for Gale Middle School, Brett Hellman. I mean, I think the rest of our assistant principals were not able to attend tonight. Mr. Brett Hellman has taught math at both the middle and high school levels in Prince William County Public Schools since 2009. In addition, he has served as Assistant Director of Student Activities, Geometry PLC Leader, Remediation Coordinator, and Project Graduation On-Site Administrator at Woodbridge Senior High School. Mr. Hellman has also coached football, track, and field. We welcome Mr. Hellman to Stafford County Public Schools. Our new assistant principal for Rocky Run Elementary School is Crystal Estes. She has been an administrative intern at Ripon Middle School in Prince William County since 2015. In that capacity, she supervised the Special Education Department and the 6th Grade Disciplinary Process. Prior to her appointment as administrative intern, Ms. Estes was a 5th-grade teacher for seven years and a middle-school math teacher for four years. Prior to coming to the education field, Ms. Estes served as probation officer with the Virginia Department of Corrections for three years. We welcome Ms. Estes to Stafford County Public Schools. The new assistant principal for Falmouth Elementary School is Nicholas Kennedy. Mr. Kennedy joined the division in 2011 as a teacher at Anthony Burns Elementary School. Since 2015, he has taught 6th grade math and science at Stafford Middle School. He was Stafford Middle's Teacher of the Year for the 2017-2018 school year. Mr. Kennedy also coached football, wrestling, and track and field. Congratulations, Nick Kennedy.
Thank you, Mrs. Kale, and thank you to HR. I know that's a lot of work to get all those appointments together, so thank you. That brings us to the action items. 9.01, appoint a school board member to serve as liaison to the Head Start Policy Council for the September 1st, 2018, to August 31st, 2019 council term. And I believe we had a volunteer for that, did we not, Ms. Hazard?
I would be, oh, sorry. I would be willing to continue in that role. I know there is a limitation, but I'm not close yet, so I would like to continue in that role. I really enjoy that program.
Do we have a motion for appointing?
Motion to approve 9.01.
Second.
Okay, and that is to appoint Ms. Hazard.
Ms. Hazard.
Ms. Hazard, all right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
I hear none opposed. Thank you, Ms. Hazard. I know we enjoy getting the reports from you of what's happening at Head Start, and also our little
I was going to say.
Dinners, please.
Dinner to continue in the fall.
With the supervisors. It's an opportunity for us to share the accomplishments of that program with the Board of Supervisors, and I think they are duly impressed by what they see there. 9.02, approve the purchase of classroom computers for the Social Studies and Technology Initiative in an amount not to exceed $200,000 from budgeted fiscal year 2019 operating funds. So we have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Egan. Do we have a second? Second by Ms. Decatur. Thank you. Any discussion? Dr. Chase?
Yeah, I have some concerns after getting responses to questions about this program. I feel a little bit like we're putting the cart before the horse. You know, when our high schools don't have a set policy for how technology is distributed to classrooms, when there doesn't seem to be a really clear instruction of faculty about how to handle behavioral issues related to laptops, when we don't know how the current technology is being used and how often it's being used, when there is no plan for how we evaluate whether providing these Chromebooks is going to be effective, I can't really support this.
Thank you. Dr. Chase, any other comments? Ms. Hazard?
I just have one. I believe that when we did discuss this item, that we did ask for those responses to be added to this agenda item, and I'm not, but it does give some context, I think, for why some of us have some concerns. And I would like those at some point added because I think that's, I believe I asked for it, but also I think that it's important to know that, to demonstrate that the board is asking some of the hard questions on these items. With regard to my vote on this, I do have some concerns as well. Mine are more in the bandwidth and stuff, and I really think that we need to have that technology policy and plan for the division. So it is not a reflection on those who brought this idea. I think it is a wonderful idea, but I need, I personally need to make sure, how is this being implemented in the larger plan of technology? I've heard varying comments from people about how that needs to go forward, and I think we need to examine that policy. It appears we have lots of eager people that are excited to get involved in technology. Maybe that can be part of this. But I really think that we need a technology plan before we start doing this, although I was very impressed with those who brought it, and I think that there is a lot to be gained from it in the right context. So reluctantly, I am going to vote against this, not for the concept, but I think for the timing.
Madam Chair?
Yes.
I just want to remind everybody that, again, I know I've said this the last time we had this discussion. We had our PTOs and our PTAs in here, asked them for their input into what it is that they want to see as budget priorities, and technology was their number-one request. So these are our parents, these are our kids, moms and dads, who put us in these seats. So I am going to support this for that reason.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
I'm going to support this because I look at this as a pilot program. We're going to do it in two classrooms, and I think it's an opportunity to see how it works. And I would ask the board if they would be agreeable to direct the superintendent to provide us an evaluation of the impact of this program, as well as, you know, a report on how it's being utilized. And I think, Dr. Chase, some of the concerns that you addressed and Ms. Hazard, you know, could be addressed in that report back because I see this as a potential first step in, you know, where we're going in the future. And I have to say that I was very impressed with the teacher who came to us at our last work session. His enthusiasm and just excitement about, you know, teaching and learning and, you know, what he would be able to do with these books is really what's, you know, pushing me to support this at this point. But I do think we need to evaluate it, and we need to look at the impact, and we also have to measure how this is being utilized, as you said, with respect to the technology.
Yes. I was under the impression that it was for more than two classrooms. Is it only for two classrooms?
Well, two classes, I should say. It's for the social studies and, what is it, the World History I and ESOL Foundations of Social Study classrooms. It's those two classrooms in every high school. Is that not correct?
So two classes across the five high schools?
Yes.
Okay, so that's
When I say two classes, I meant
Two classes across the five
So two courses with multiples of sections. Yes. Which is, in my view, more fair because then you don't have to pick one class to get it, as, you know, opposed to the ones that don't.
Perhaps Ms. Egan would accept a friendly amendment of the information that, or the analysis that you have requested as being part of the motion, because many times, our requests like that can just not meaningfully get lost, that I think that if, from the board's perspective, I would like, I would suggest making that part of the motion.
Yes, I would accept that as an amended motion, and I think that's a good idea.
Yeah.
I'm not saying go unaccounted for, so that fits perfectly to what Ms. Hazard just said.
If there's anything that other board members would like to add to that, I think we should. Perhaps we could ask the superintendent to send us, and we'll give her at least a month because I know school's starting, but send us a proposed plan for the evaluation and review, and then we can all look at it, and then everybody can have some input.
But it's a starting point, like you said.
And that's, I was going to say, we still need that, the stuff that you two mentioned. We still need that answered. That doesn't go away just because we approved this $200,000 Chromebooks for social studies.
And special thanks to the teacher from Stafford High, right, that came in. Was it North Stafford?
South Stafford.
North Stafford? South Stafford. I thought it was Stafford High School. Okay. That came for us, so you tell him he made a difference. All right. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed?
No. No.
Madam Clerk?
Dr. Chase?
No.
Ms. Egan?
Aye.
Ms. Egan?
Aye.
Ms. Hazard?
No.
Ms. Healy?
Yes.
Yes.
Madam Chair, motion passes.
Okay, that brings us to 9.03, approve the purchase of a Power School Assessment and Analytics License in the amount of $1,9,780 from budgeted FY '19 operating funds. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Egan, second by Ms. Hazard. Any discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve, 9.03, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 9.04, approve the award of two professional services consulting contracts, open-ended term contracts for cost estimating services. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Motion by Ms. Hazard?
Second.
Second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion?
I just have a question. Hey, Mr. Haran, how much, what do these usually go for? This are, is it a bank of contracts that we do for a cost estimation, or is it just one? Or how does it?
Yes, sir. It's an on-call contract, so we can reach to these folks. We have two, so we have, you know, some choices. And depending on the effort, depends. So we are just getting ready to launch a cost estimating programmatically for the new high school, so that we have that to provide as part of our CIP supplemental. That was one of the feedbacks we got during the first process.
I remember the last cost estimation firm. Are we going to, is it the same, or we don't know who?
Well, one of them, we selected, one is Downey Scott, which do a lot of K-12 work, but another's out of DC, and it's one we haven't worked with before. But I'll give you an example. So we're doing a high school cost estimate, programmatic, as detailed as possible, and it's going to cost between $10,000 and $13,000. That range, $14,000.
It gives you a ROM.
That's right. But it's going to be detailed enough that it gives confidence to both our board as well as Board of Supervisors on the cost for a high school.
Yeah, and I think
Just an example.
And I think this was very, very helpful last time to have, you know, professionals come in and
You bet.
And do that, and, okay.
So these are five-year contracts, one year with four option years.
Thank you, Mr. Haran. All right. All in favor of the motion to approve, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 9.05, approve the acting superintendent's proposed revisions to Policy 2102 and Regulation 2102-R residency for school admission. Do we have a motion?
Motion to approve the revisions to Regulation 2105 and 2105-R.
Second. Motion by Ms. Hazard, second by Ms. Egan. Any discussion?
Ms. Kale, since this is a, or Darrell, since this is, has to do with attendance, can you give us a quick synopsis of the issue?
So basically, these two policies
Oh, could you come over here so everybody could hear, please, Mr. Nelson? So glad to have you with us this evening.
Nice to be here.
We missed you a couple of meetings ago.
Yeah, yeah, we were actually, where did you go?
We struggled along without you.
In Alaska during your heat wave.
All right.
It was pleasant. So basically, these two policies reflect the effort of the state to facilitate the ease of transition for students of military families. It's going to enable military families who are moving into the area but are It's going to enable military families who are moving into the area but are not yet here in Stafford to identify a location which they intend to move to during the year, and we're going to allow them to enroll, provided that they have the appropriate paperwork. The other thing is, the policy is designed to allow students who are here already in our schools to remain in our schools if the parent gets an order to deploy or relocate, they'd be able to complete their school year. Another aspect of these policies is that the law speaks to a, not a camp, I can't think of, a military base within the district, within the division, and we can, those students are permitted to enroll in our schools. And the way our policy will flow is that the portion of Quantico that is actually in Stafford, those students are permitted to enroll in our schools. So I think that's it in a nutshell for the two policies that you're going to be considering tonight, but they are to ease the transition of military students, and we have quite a few over the course of a year.
Good. That's good, thanks. And, you know, we have, we have a lot of folks in the military in this community, it's very, very important that we, you know, number one, follow the law, but number two, try to take care of those kids that are, their parents are out there at the tip of the spear, so, and deploying, okay?
Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Any other discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve 9.05? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. 9.06. Approve the acting superintendent's proposed revisions to Policy 2105 and Regulation 2105-R, non-residence. Do we have a motion?
Move to approve.
Motion by Mr. McOscar?
Second.
Second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion?
I have a couple of comments on this one. I appreciate that we've done this. What did strike me was the provision that all division employees, volunteers, and contractors are required to report any expressed threats or behavior that may represent a threat to the community, school, or self. See something, say something, do something. I was curious how that is being...
That's the next...
Oh, sorry, I got off one. Sorry, my apologies. But we'll hold that thought.
You had me scrolling through the document.
I was scrolling. Okay. Any discussion on 9.06? No? All in favor of the motion to approve 9.06? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to 9.07. Approve the acting superintendent's proposed new Regulation 2701-R and revisions to Policy 2701, threat assessment procedures. Do we have a motion?
I must have gotten that mixed up.
Move to approve.
Second.
For discussion, yeah.
Motion by Mr. McOscar, second by Ms. Egan. All right, discussion, Ms. Hazard?
I apologize, I got 21 and those mixed up, but anyway, the provision about, that I just stated, about that division employees, volunteers, and contractors are required to report, I am somewhat interested in how that requirement is being communicated to staff, volunteers, and contractors. And then my follow-on question is, is there any thought, certainly I don't want to put a requirement, of how we are going to be encouraging parents and students to be reporting? I'm very interested in our communication regarding this, either change or to policy, and then, since this is such a big issue, I believe, nationally.
Wasn't that covered by Mr. Martin on our briefing?
It was, but I would just like to hear what the communication plan and how we're really reaching out to everybody. I didn't really...
That was kind of a, wasn't that a closed session?
Well, this is, this is the public portion of what this policy is.
Yeah, but I think that information was privileged. Well, get ahead, you, I thought.
State law changed. It used to be that we were required to do threat assessments just on students, but now it requires adults also. And this was commuted during our SLA. We had a full day's, or half a day of training on threat assessments last week, and all our administrators in our buildings were encouraged to follow the policies, and they will go back as they report with their teams, their assessment teams, and how to report with that.
I thought that that was part of SLA, so I sort of wanted that in there, but I do believe we also need to, as a community, and I'd be very interested with our social workers and psychologists, of how to also communicate to our parents and kids. I know several of us have had incidents within our schools that have, you know, how do people deal with finding information on their child's stuff? Who do they know who to call? I just think that would be a great partnership with us and the sheriff's office. It's just really a broader comment.
Can I ask a quick question while we're on this particular topic? We also talked about speaking to consultants to do a, kind of a, an overall assessment, kind of like a study, like we do with everything else. Are we getting any traction on that? Who wants to answer it? I see heads nodding.
Yes, two weeks ago, Ms. Cale and myself and Greg Martin met with some consultants to review their process for coming in and looking at our plans.
Awesome.
And that's probably a proposal that we'll be bringing forward at a later date.
Good, great, thanks.
That was, that's for the physical facilities, though. That's the threat assessment for the physical facilities, right, yeah, okay. This is the threat assessment for the student, or the individual.
Yeah, that's...
Communicate, no, I'm with you.
I just said while we're on the topic of...
That's good, no, that's, that's a good, good question.
Ms. Egan, also, it was a great presentation, but we also wanted to just go over it a little bit with Dr. Kispoff, to get his input first.
Good, perfect.
All right. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion to approve 9.07? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. That brings us to information items, and there's a number of these information items that the staff has requested we move to action, and this is partially because we have only one meeting this month, and these items are related to the beginning of the school year, so...
Can, can we do a little bit of agenda management with this, or do we have to do them individually where we have to move them? Can we move a slate to action and then take them on individually?
Well, I don't think that would be a problem, but it's not going to take that long.
I think we can be quick. I think we can do it.
If we have a motion to move in the second, we can just...
I think tonight.
Okay, I just thought we'd save a little time.
No, it would, but I think we have to count them and...
Yeah. Well, then, let's start with 10.01. Approve the acting superintendent's proposed revisions to Regulation 4802-R, authorized leave VRS Plan I and Plan II employees, and to Regulation 4803-R, authorized leaves VRS hybrid plan employees. There's also a staff request in this item that we make this retroactive to July 1st, and I'm going to let Mr. McOscar address this.
So very quickly, we had the administrative assistants last year speak to us about pay and equity, and one of the things that came to my attention was that they were forced to the 12-month contracts, and some folks wanted to and some folks did not want to go to that 12-month contract. But in doing so, even though they worked for Stafford County Schools for 18 years as a 10-month, they reverted back to their leave accrual days of a one-year employee at 12 months. And so they, they were asking, hey, doesn't some of my time, shouldn't some of my time get, and the analogy to that would be, you know, those in the FBI, or they, they, when they're given orders to move, the government buys their house, you know, from them, and, you know, because you're forced to move, it's not your, it's not your, so anyway, that is the intent of this, is to take care of the administrative assistants that are working so hard for us at our elementary schools, and then hopefully next year we can take care of some, some funding later this year for them with the pay raises, but that's, I request that this is moved to action.
Right. And really what this is doing is giving them credit for their years of experience. Under our regulation, it says to be qualified for 12 months position, you have to have worked 12 months to get credit for the year. So because these employees were on 11-month contracts, they would actually start off their 12-year, 12-month contract with zero years of experience. So we're just trying to make them whole for this move that really wasn't, you know, at their particular request. Dr. Chase?
Yeah, so is there a window, so, of how long this, this option to have retroactive leave in place? So if somebody decided they didn't want to be 12-month and they left, but then they came back five years later, would retroactive be there for them as well, or is this just a short period of time?
That's a good question. Mrs. Aberg?
The intent of this was for those employees who were moved in their contract length. So if I choose to relocate and then choose to come back, that would be a different scenario.
You're welcome. It's almost like we're grandfathering them into this. So if there's no objection to this, this change, is there any issue with moving it to action tonight?
No.
Do you want to make a motion?
Madam Chair, move, I request we move 10.01 to action.
Second. All right, motion in two seconds. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. Now, do we have a motion on, on approval?
Madam Chair, I request that 10.01 be moved for approval.
Okay, and that is making it retroactive to July 1st, correct?
Yes.
2018, for current employees?
Yes.
Okay. All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Motion by Mr. McOscar, second by Ms. Hazard. Any discussion?
Just how will this be communicated, and can it be communicated quickly to those that are impacted? Thank you.
Good question.
That grapevine, hopefully will work with the good news as well as it works with the other kind of news. Thank you. All right. All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously, and thank you, Mr. McOscar, for bringing that to our, our attention.
Thank you, Ms. Aberg and team.
All right, 10.02. This is another item that staff has requested be moved to action tonight. Approve the award of a contract to Allied Instructional Services in the amount of $324,075 from non-budgeted FY19 operational funds for one teacher for hearing-impaired students and two teachers for vision-impaired students.
Can I get a clarification? I had heard that it actually was budgeted, or some part of it was budgeted?
That's my question. It is budgeted.
It's showing as being budgeted, so...
Yeah, so initially, in the agenda item, it was non-budgeted, and after talking, I clarified with Ms. Johnson that it was in fact budgeted. We moved money from our salary laps for the empty positions that we're unable to fill, and we also have an additional amount funded each year to cover the difference when we're not able to fill these, so these positions ultimately are budgeted, or this con, money for these contracted positions are budgeted.
Thank you, Chair of our Fab Committee, for bringing that to our attention and getting it corrected for the record. Thank you.
Because I had a similar question. Ms. Aberg, when there is a contract for services, or maybe this is from Ms. Johnson, when there is a contract for services that we, in a year, do that, how, how do we advertise for that position? How early do we start advertising for the following school year to see if we can find somebody? Does that make any sense what I'm asking?
So you're asking regarding the posting of our vacancies?
Especially when we, the position has been in a contract basis, can we start then advertising for that, like, in March, or really early?
We do. We do. We will keep, at this time, we will have, we actually have positions posted as a pooled position, where candidates can apply now, even for, for future dates.
Okay.
All right, any other questions, discussion? All right, do we have, we had a...
Motion to move to action.
Correct?
Oh, I don't think we did.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a motion? We had a discussion, now we can have a motion. All right, do we have a motion to move it to action?
Motion to move 10.02 to action.
Motion by Ms. Egan, second by Ms. Decatur. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Do we have a motion to approve?
Motion to approve 10.02. Second.
Motion by Ms. Egan, second by Dr. Chase. Any discussion? All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Brings us to 10.03. This is another item that's been requested, we move this to action this evening. Approve the award of a professional service contract in the amount of $207,192 using FY19 CIP funds to Perkins Eastman Architects DPC of Washington, DC, for Design and Construction Administration Services for the renovation of the Frederickburg Christian School, Early Childhood Special Education/Head Start North Campus.
Motion to move 10.03 to action.
Motion by Ms. Egan, do we have a second? Second. Second by Ms. Decatur. Any discussion?
Do we know when we will actually have approval to purchase the Early Childhood Special Education Center?
That's my same question.
We discussed with county staff today, and it's looking like September 4th meeting, or 5th. They've changed it to Wednesday of that week because of Labor Day. So that's the earliest. At one point in time, we were hoping it was going to be August 21st, and that still may be in play, but I can't, I feel more comfortable with the August 5th date, I mean the September 5th date.
I mean, do we want to commit ourselves to $207,000 if there's still some possibility that we might not get...
That's right, it's a great question, and I would ask the board to consider approving it contingent upon funding.
Right. That was exactly where I was going, was to add the kicker, like...
Yeah, that'd be great.
Contingent upon the, the approval of supervisors of the acquisition of Frederickburg Christian School, because the funding is there, but the issue is, are we going to have the school? We don't want to spend the money...
That's correct.
...if we're not going to acquire the school.
That's correct.
That was my suggestion, to modify the motion.
All right, well, right now, when we get to a motion to, to approve, then we can add that contingency to it. All right, any other discussion, questions? All in favor of the motion to move this to action? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, do we have a motion?
Motion to approve 10.03.
Contingent?
Contingent upon the award of the FCS, or approval of FCS by the Board of Supervisors.
Okay. Second. Motion by Ms. Egan, second by Ms. Decatur. Any further discussion? All in favor of the motion? Please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? All right, so, brings us to 10.04, and this is, as far as I know, the last of the requests to move to action. Approve the award of a professional service contract in the amount not to exceed $864,800 using FY19 CIP funds to VMDO Architects of Charlottesville, Virginia, for Design and Construction Administration Services for the renovations and additions to Ferry Farm Elementary School. Mr. McOscar, do you have a motion?
I'd like to move this to action.
I would like to just add the same contingency that was added to the, to the last item.
When we get to the motion, we can...
Right, okay, just figure it all tracking.
All right. Second. All right, we have a motion by Mr. McOscar, and second by Ms. Decatur, to move this to action. All in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries unanimously. Now, do you have a motion, Mr.?
Move 10.04 to approval with the contingency that the Board of Supervisors fund the project.
Second. Motion by Mr. McOscar, second by Ms. Decatur. Any discussion?
I just would like to let Mr. Haran know that the BOS meeting did not move, it's I just would like to let Mr. Haran know that the BOS meeting did not move, it's still on for the 4th, just so you know, per my counterpart. Thank you, Ms. Shelton.
All right.
Is she up there in the back, Ms. Shelton? Oh, there.
Ah, we'd like to welcome the Acquia Board of Supervisors member who is very welcome to come to the front row if you please.
Is there a camera that can pan back there, please?
Thank you. And thank you for coming to our work session as well. And Mrs. Baumke, I saw her back there also.
Thanks for coming.
All right, all in favor of the motion to approve this item with the contingency as stated, please say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, motion carries unanimously. 10.05, and this one is truly information and I don't believe we're asking to move this to...
I think we front loaded them all.
Actually, we actually tried to streamline the agenda, Ms. Egan, by putting them all together so we could keep on a roll. 10.05, approve the award of a service contract in the amount of $101,774 using FY '19 operating funds to Train US Inc. of Ashland, Virginia in support of the division's heating, ventilation, air conditioning, HVAC, chiller maintenance plan. Anybody have any questions about this item? This will be coming back to us.
It always comes back. Don't we have a Stafford company that can do this? I keep asking you that and of course, you're doing the right thing by bidding it out, but darn it. Try, all right. I'd like to see a Stafford company.
All right. This will come back to us for action at the next meeting. Item 10.06, approve the school board's FY '20 budget development calendar. Dr. Chase, would you like to address this or Mr. Fulmer?
I think I will defer to Mr. Fulmer.
All right, Mr. Fulmer, it's that time.
So from a high level, one of the options that we looked at was pushing the initial presentation by the superintendent back slightly. It's typically been mid-January, we've had a special call meeting, looking at just later in January and that just gives us more time from our state numbers. We're always in a crunch, we don't get the state numbers till the end of December, usually December 18th, 19th, 20th, sometime around there. And when I say the state numbers, the initial projections from the governor. And so it's tough for us to turn around and a superintendent to make choices if funding, funding could change, a couple million dollars potentially increase or decrease. And so we looked at what some of the other divisions were doing and specifically what Harrisonburg was doing with Dr. Kizner. So we have not discussed this with Dr. Kizner, but this is just coming for info tonight for your discussion and then we'll also follow up with him and he'll be here before we bring it back. So looking at pushing it back a little bit later, but then immediately rolling into the school board, working in work sessions to begin working on the approved budget. After that, it's pretty similar. Some of the items we discussed were the importance of getting this budget approved or adopted, I should say, earlier than we have in years past, mainly with the reduced time that we're going to have this coming summer. We want to be able to have the budget adopted so we can move forward with teacher contracts right away and one, get our current teachers under contract and also be able to offer outside teachers that we're recruiting to come to Stafford under contract as soon as possible. They will be a very, you know, shortened summer next year, three weeks. So basically, all the vacancies we have now, we're looking at, we'd be starting next year with that. So the sooner we can get the budget adopted, the sooner we can move forward. So obviously, there's a lot that plays into that, as you saw this past year, working with local government and them approving the funding source for the local revenue to the school board. Typically, the county administrator presents in early March, so we, I don't see how it was possible for us to have an approved budget and present to them prior to March 5th or 6th, I believe that date is. So we're looking at presenting immediately after that. We don't want to, we can't have the school board present at the same meeting as the county administrator presents his budget. The key would be, we will have a superintendent's budget presented that the county administrator will be able to start building his assumptions on. And then so after we guys, after we present, we'll move into some form of a joint work session. We've got that on here right now. We've also worked, looked at moving that date around a little bit to try to get it sooner. But once again, trying to line up the dates to presenting to them. We don't want to have a joint work session prior to presenting to the Board of Supervisors. We'd like to present and then roll into whether it's that meeting or a subsequent meeting. So looking at current dates that the Board of Supervisors and the school board have, where what we've done in the past is present and then move into a joint work session and then either go back into, from a work session into the formal meeting.
When are they going to set their tax? Is it on here? Did I miss it?
Yes, that's right.
Where is it? March, is it March?
March 19. No, we're...
March 19.
No, where's...
County advertises...
It's early April.
April 2nd, okay. Okay, tax rates, okay. Yeah, we usually want to make sure that we give the opportunity to brief them up on our issues before they set their tax rates.
So it's not feasible that we present, at least I don't see it feasible in my opinion, that we present prior to the county administrator, but our goal is to obviously have the first pass of the school board budget presented prior to the Board of Supervisors making any significant decisions on their side.
Any comments, questions? Mr. Fulmer, I just have a suggestion. You can take it or leave it. February 12th is the public budget hearing. I'd suggest you set an inclement weather date for that because we are notorious in January, February for those closures. And if school is closed, we won't have it.
When we have the date, that we have an alternate, we always, it tends to go, but if we don't, it won't.
We, for those public hearings, we advertise in the paper so we can even include in that advertisement the tentative date then so we don't have to re-advertise.
Right. That helps and also we don't have to give the additional notice and take more time to try to find a date. Okay, well, we'll see you next...
I have a couple of comments.
Sure.
Just, but not for, I think for us as a board, based on the confusion last year, we need to be wishing out, each one of us to our counterpart across the street to say, what is your budget calendar? I would love to someday have a joint budget calendar. I don't know if Mr. Dudenheffer, who I believe is their Fab Chair, would be open to that, but I think it also goes a long way. We have certainly struggled with the word joint this year, or at least I have. I think this would be a really positive step for our community if we were to pursue something along that line of trying to do a joint calendar, not to make it even busier than it is. I actually think that the CIP, which I think is part of the budget, should be actually somehow lumped in here. And I'm not trying to make it more, but if we aren't good on our dates and if we're not coordinating, but I think that's a board issue. I think that's, I appreciate always what Mr. Fulmer does and I know we all do and there's a lot of staff coordination, but there's a lot on us to go over and say, look, we want to have a joint calendar. If you aren't willing for that, perhaps write a letter. Sometimes they are not as effective, I've written several, but it puts out for us that we as a board want to work together to do that. And I think in that type of letter, which I would suggest, we really put next year, having teacher contracts signed as early as possible is critical in more than any other year potentially because it's a really shortened summer. That's just what the reality is. But if we don't educate our Board of Supervisors of that fact and maybe some others, that's just one of the ones that comes to mind, then I think that's on us that this falls apart. So I think we can at least, I don't know, I will defer to the Fab, but I really think maybe this year would be a year for us to even send a formal letter or go over to their meeting and ask for it. Just my thoughts.
Okay, anything else on the budget? No, that'll move us along to 10.05, approve the award of a service contract. Oh, I'm sorry, where are we? Yeah, are we on 10.05? Service contract in the amount of $101,774. I know, I'm sorry, we did that. We're moving right along here, we don't want to go backwards. We want to go forwards. All right, 10.07, adopt a resolution authorizing an application to the Virginia Public School Authority, VPSA, for the sale of bonds in amount not to exceed $10,395,000 with the objective of providing net proceeds of $99,900,000 for the FY, the 2018 fall bond pool. Any questions about this item?
I just have one. The repair mechanical system at Rock Elementary, is that an urgent item? I mean, I'm glad it is if we're covering it. I don't remember it in the list of projects.
Yeah, I don't remember it either. I was wondering why, why was it popped up here? Why did it pop up here?
No, it's scheduled for next summer and so the money we're borrowing now is for the design effort so we can prepare for bidding in February and then the construction dollars will come in the May borrow for that and it's phase one. It's a two-phase project, very similar to what we're doing at AG Wright in Garrisonville, it's just a mechanical upgrade.
So it's probably a $2 million.
It's close to 3, it's 2.8 total, all said and done, both phases. It's a pretty large project.
Well, I questioned this also when it first came on and Mr. Haran well knows because I thought it was $200,000, which seemed below the limit that we are encouraged not to borrow, not to have bond funds used for. But they did, thank you very much, add to the agenda item that this is part one of the project and this designed the project and the bulk of the funding will be put forth in the spring borrow.
Yes, ma'am.
Correct. Thank you for clarifying that. All right, that'll come back to us at the next meeting. Now, will that be enough time for the Fredericksburg Christian School contract award? Because we have to send, we send this to the supervisors and then they set a public hearing, correct, on the bond fund?
The public hearing is already established for August 21st.
So this is on it?
It is, yes, ma'am.
Oh, okay, good.
FY '19 program is already included.
That's great. All right, that'll come back to us at the next meeting. 10.08, approve the school board's FY '20-FY '29 CIP large projects and infrastructure priorities. And this is what we did not get to at our work session because of our intense review of the prior subject matter.
Motion to divert?
Well, it's just information.
Yeah. Well, we can't take it, we certainly can't take it up next time, so it'll be on for information again then.
Okay, yes, we can bring it back for information.
I agree.
We can bring it back for information.
So we don't want to have the discussion tonight? That's fine, we can do it.
Nice.
Well, that's fine.
No, because it's, okay. I didn't need a motion for it. Great.
We'll just bring it back. Uh-oh, Mr. Haran.
Madam Chairman, if I may, I just wanted to make sure the board is aware, we're trying to provide this information to the county staff for, to keep on the timelines, timelines of the joint CIP process. So the goal for school staff was to provide both the large CIP project priorities as well as the infrastructure priorities to the county staff by mid-September. So if we, if the board, if there's an opportunity for the board to discuss this at a upcoming meeting prior to our next board meeting, that would be helpful, but if not, we can certainly convey that to the county staff that we're two weeks delayed and it may be latter part of September. But this large capital CIP project list, the first five items on there are ones that were already prioritized by the board last CIP cycle and they are currently in the CIP in some form or other. Six through 10 are either new requirements or requirements that did not make the CIP this particular last round on the large capital.
We can talk about it.
Okay, I didn't know if we're not going to have, we're deferring or...
We can talk, we can talk about it.
I, I'd like some more information about this 3R infrastructure project list and what we're doing with this because I know that you are aware that the board is not really all on the same page about whether or not we want to move forward with adding the 3Rs.
I'd be happy. So the 3R infrastructure list is nothing new to school staff. We always have called it infrastructure project list and we have always identified 10 years of projects. What we haven't done in the past is we haven't prioritized all the years and the requirement through the joint process is to prioritize five years in each particular fiscal year. So there's some level of effort to that, but it's, it's turning out to be not as monumental as we thought. So we have in the past prioritized the first year, like FY '20 in this case, we've always prioritized that for the board to consider and then throughout the year, we have some inserts based on some things that happened and then you guys will consider, or you have considered it for prior, you know, end of year funding to fund these projects. So the only difference here is that we're prioritizing year '21, '22, '23, '24 to meet the joint CIP guidelines. Now, I can't tell you at this particular point what we're going to do with the scoring once we provide it because we are using a scoring criteria that was established or proposed, it's not established, it's proposed in the joint CIP, which is my understanding will be talked about at the Joint School Working Group with the Board of Supervisors, the potential revisions to the joint policy. So we are scoring these using that criteria, which is not very far at all from the criteria that we were using in the past for our infrastructure projects. So we're just scoring the last, the next four years versus just FY '20. So that's the big difference. We're pushing through it and scoring them, so.
May I ask a question? When is this board going to get a, the full board going to get an update on all of the FOPOs or FOPO fixes that were supposed to be made to the joint CIP process?
Well, I'm not aware of all the FOPOs specifically, other than just the anecdotal stuff that we've, we've struggled through. So I don't know if they're like highlighted in some lists, so it's hard for me to respond to that.
Because I will tell you, for those of you who weren't at the Joint Schools Committee meeting, the last one that I was at, I essentially told the supervisors that this whole thing, as far as this board was concerned, was going to be on hold until we were given some kind of, you know, not a guarantee, but reaffirmation that problems with the process were going to be fixed.
Yes, ma'am.
We've not heard of any of them yet.
Fair enough. That's a very fair assessment and I guess my response to that would be, I would consider the meeting, the Joint School Working Group, an opportunity for leadership from both boards to discuss the revisions and to discuss any of the concerns that we had during the last process. And then if they seem to be ironed out at that particular forum, to bring it forward to our board for formal approval.
So that will be on the 27th?
I believe so, yes, sure.
And the revisions that you guys came up with from your, that'll be on the 27th for discussion.
Several of the concerns have been addressed and kind of, you know, marked through and hashed out, so yeah.
They're highlighted, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, I...
I think they're highlighted.
Right. I mean, our board hasn't approved a process yet and one of the questions was, what is the funding for these 3Rs where, that we are sending over? And in my, talking with my counterpart, there's some, there isn't yet a clear idea of there being money across the street separate from what we currently do.
Yes, ma'am. Yes, Dr. Chase, remember that this infrastructure list is not any different than what we've always done. So the only difference is that we are going to score it based on a criteria that's been very similar to what we've used in the past, but it's being proposed. And it's a good criteria, I think. They consulted with staff, county staff consulted with our staff and collectively, we, we put it together. So a joint funding pool, you're correct. At this particular time, there is not one. So the actual merging of the two lists into one list, it might be academic. We are still under the, at least staff is under the assumption that we'll continue to try to fund our infrastructure projects with operational savings near the end of the year.
Okay, any other questions?
I have a couple as well, sort of in that same vein. Regarding the infrastructure projects, and I guess this is something we as a board have had, or have to deal with, I know that we, you know, going to Ms. Egan's point, we talked about the big projects being the first ones to be part of this joint CIP process. We can all agree, disagree on how we thought that process weren't. But I feel like we're now adding another element of the county staff having the ability to then prioritize all of our repair and projects. This past year, we had wind projects that knocked out, what, five roofs, six roofs? I don't want to become tied, and maybe because I'm not on the committees anymore that I don't understand it, but are we then saying, this is our list, come hell or high water, this is what we're going to fund? If we have emergency events, do we now have to go through another process to write another letter to say, oh, the wind, we need to fix Margaret Bren's roof, Rocky Winds? I'm just concerned of what maybe we're giving up in this process and that's just more probably a philosophical, you know me, most of you know me pretty well, I, I believe that, I just have some concerns. I guess that's what I'm going to say because I think we can deal very well with the wind events or the flooding or whatever the heck it could be, my gosh, with what Mother Nature's doing now, who knows what might come future. And I don't want to limit our ability to meet an immediate need. So I guess that's just more my philosophical question and I guess my other concern is going to be, do we as a board really need to say that we really want to amend this CIP calendar to allow the school board to submit the projects at a time when we have more background information? Because I don't feel that we, I don't feel that anything has changed from May 23rd to today and, you know, for me, as, thank you all for letting me be on Head Start, I don't see melchers here. We could be 10 to 12 years out on melchers and that gives me great concern and Fredericksburg Christian, we don't know what the numbers are going to be. We just spent a whole session saying we want the best data and the correct data, whatever we say that's going to be. And I am very uncomfortable approving these projects without that data in front of me. So those are philosophically, you don't have, these weren't really questions... weren't really questions, Mr. Haran, these are more philosophical ones from my perspective that I just want to share with our Fab members, because I know they will be, and they're joint school members, because they'll be the ones on the front line on it. But those are my philosophical questions and concerns.
I would like to just address the one on Gary Melchers. It was staff's opinion that we could, that we could try and address some of the shortfalls at Gary Melchers through our infrastructure list. So we have some of those embedded throughout, as well as some of the other schools that previously weren't.
Didn't Gary Melchers get some money from, out of the FY '18?
We have an HVAC system at the gym, and we have the classroom conversions to early childhood special ed going on.
Okay.
So those are the, those are two. And then we put in a new cooler for food nutrition.
And you did print a highlight, I mean, a highlight, a note here about Gary Melchers' complex. And then, of course, carry over funds for Ferry Farm, so we can actually get funded.
So I would just comment, if you have 10 seconds. I don't believe that to be the case. I believe the school board will still have the flexibility to address its facility and infrastructure needs on, you know, especially since we're not relying on a joint fund, a joint pot of money at this particular time. If in the future that changes, there's certainly a concern, valid concerns, in my opinion. Well, we always submit. Remember, we always submit this. This is part of our CIP. So that part is not new. Okay, I would just, I would just remind the board, it's not new. So this is something we've done since I've been here for 14 years.
So what do we want to do? What's our way forward with this?
Well, why don't we try to put it on our August 28th meeting, if, if we have time left, and maybe we'll come in and.
Do the program first, and then we'll do the program capacity.
And redistricting.
And then just take these one by one.
If we are able to address this at that meeting.
20, is it 29? I'm sorry, yep, you're right, Ms. Egan's right, 29.
29, okay. I mean, 29th, and that was at 5:30, right? If we're able to address it at that meeting, then we can bring it back for action. But if we do not have time at that point, then we'll bring it back for information again.
Yes, ma'am. Very good.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Haran.
Thank you.
All right. Brings us to 10.09, approve the acting superintendent's proposed revisions to Policy 3308 and Regulation 3308 are charter schools. Any questions about this? There are no charter schools currently in Stafford County.
Snapshot.
Do we ever get any?
Yeah.
No, we're just aligning, we're making our policy better. We're aligning it with the VSBA guidelines and the VDOE guidelines, that's it.
I just wondered if we ever get any. I just.
Well, we've never gotten an application that I can recall. Mr. Nelson? Nothing formal. Yeah. All right, so that'll come back to us next meeting for action. 10.10, approve the acting superintendent's proposed tuition fees in accordance with Policy 5703, tuition fees for non-resident students. Any questions about this one?
I have a quick question. Mr. Fulmer, the, the number that we use, the general education basic rate per pupil, can you just confirm to me how that was calculated?
Yeah, it comes off of our state report, the superintendent's report. Every locality is given an operational per student, per pupil expenditure amount. And that's so total, including all funding sources, because we, for these non-resident students, we don't receive state funding. So when we charge them, we're essentially charging them the full cost of that student.
But that, that is calculated based on our revenue divided by a certain?
It's our, so our total expenditure is divided by a number of students ultimately.
Okay.
So, so I'm going to piggyback off Ms. Hazard, where I think she, so are you saying that $10,535 is our Stafford County per expenditure for students?
Correct. But, and, and that's not just operating fund. When it goes to the state, it's looking at operating and grants. It looks at all of our funds minus fleet services because it doesn't have an educational impact. But what gets included on our state report is, you know, our operating and grants fund. So in total, per student, that's what it costs.
So, forgive me, you know, like when I was in the military, they told me I was making, you know, 20,000 a year, when really, the check only came in at 10,000. And I was wondering, where the heck are they getting this number? So back to the question at hand, is, is the $10,535 the same amount of money that is shown on most of the state websites for pupil, per pupil funding? Do they use that whole package, or are we adding in?
Yes, this number comes directly from the state website, based on our annual report, superintendent's report. But that is VDOE's per people cost for Stafford County.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Fulmer. All right, that'll come back to us at the next meeting for action.
Sorry, can I add one more thing to that? This, these are FY '17 numbers. They have not been updated for FY '18 because our FY '18 numbers are not going to be finalized until we do our superintendent's report in September. And at that point, it would be too late to set these rates. So we're always going to be a year behind. When, these are the same rates that we adopted mid-year last year when this policy came back to you guys, or initially came to you guys. This was a new policy this past year, and we had already submitted our report by then. So this will be the only year, ideally, that we're going to be having the same rates for two years straight.
Thank you, Mr. Fulmer. That brings us to 10.11, VSBA school board member code of conduct.
Okay, don't have the, I was just going to make copies of the code of conduct, but you all have them. You've signed it, and you know what it says. So I'm going to get right to it. As we are now beginning to address redistricting, I thought it would be a good idea to go back and watch some of the public comments made in the weeks leading up to the redistricting vote of February 24th and 2015. The consensus was clear in speakers' concerns that we needed better communication, reinstate fairness, put sunlight on everything that we are doing, and finally, recognize and address conflicts of interest, which brought me to reexamining how we're going to do things going forward, as well as reexamining what we can do to eliminate some of the concerns that we heard from parents over three years ago. What I'm looking at right now is the Virginia School Board Association Code of Conduct that we all signed on January 9th, which was just seven months ago. I'm going to read, I'm just going to give you number nine, which is the impetus for this, this item. "I will refrain from using the board position for personal or partisan gain and avoid any conflict of interests or the appearance of impropriety." And I'll be coming back to that in just one second. "After the last redistricting article appeared in the Freelance Star, there were several comments made across social media about the whole redistricting exercise and how we were addressing it, and some of the, some of the, the comments echoed concerns about, same things that was said in 2015. One of the recurring themes was Ms. Healy's role on this board and her law firm. While I didn't perceive it to be an issue then, I do see it as an issue now, especially given the fact that she now holds the chairman position, but also that her law firm is now, has 16 open lawsuits against our funding body, representing the very folks who impact our school capacity and our school proffers. Development has a direct impact on redistricting, proffers, and capacity discussions that we have. I do not believe Ms. Healy should be presiding over board discussions, actions, work sessions, or other activity that this board takes up that relates directly to development and its impacts on the schools going forward. Her role as the chairman certainly does give our community the sense that there is a conflict of interest, perceived or otherwise, and to some, the appearance of impropriety. I am not asking her to step down as chair, and I'm not asking her to recuse herself, as I believe her constituents deserve to have their voices heard along, or allowing Ms. Healy to cast a vote. But I would ask this board to support me in asking her to pass the gavel to Mr. McCosker, the vice chair, when such issues arise to be addressed by this board, keeping us in compliance with the very code of conduct that we signed just seven short months ago. Additionally, I'll go one step further and ask her to step down as the school's chairman of the Joint Schools Working Committee, where we work hand-in-hand with the Board of Supervisors on school-related issues. And having said that, I'm going to move to remove Ms. Healy from presiding as chairman from all development-related discussions that have a direct impact on our schools, and to remove her as the school's chairman on the Joint Schools Working Committee."
Second. I would like to say I'm not, have not been to any of the meetings of the Joint Schools Working Committee since I was appointed as a member. So I don't believe the chairman has been elected for that.
Maybe, maybe you were appointed in, I don't know, but I was told that you were the chairman.
We, we haven't even had a meeting since then.
Okay, I'm just going by what I was told.
But this is under information, right? This is not under action?
And I just made a motion. It was an afterthought, so it could go anywhere.
Okay.
So we have a, I'm not asking you to step down as chair. I'm just asking you to step away and hand Mr. McCosker the gavel when it comes to things that are associated with development. That's all.
Okay, so I, I think what we'll do is, you know, that was a valid, a valid and honest opinion that you have, and you put it in front of the board. I think that we, we do have a legal attorney that takes care of the board. I think a written response from you, maybe give that to the attorney and citing your issues. I think that the fairest thing to do is give it to our attorney for a legal review of.
I made a motion. There's a motion on the table. She's got a handle at us, the chairman.
Well, the motion, actually, if it's on for information, there's no motion to move anything to action.
I decided to make a motion. This was not part of the original agenda. We have a motion on the table. Does it matter where it, where it was posted?
I believe you're going to have to have someone do this to action. I understand that you made the motion.
Would you like to come forward, Mr. Nelson?
So it would be my opinion, and of course, it's the chair, the way this works ordinarily is that the chair would make a decision whether or not to entertain this motion, whether it's appropriate or not. She would make that ruling. The board would decide, if they disagree, some might could say, I disagree with that. And then the board in total would vote on whether they agree with the, the ruling of the chair. It seems like, because this was not anticipated in advance by anybody on the board, it's just arisen now, that it should be postponed to a date certain, which would be the next meeting perhaps, or the meeting after that, for consideration and discussion. It seems premature at this time. So I would say it's out of order.
So being on for information is appropriate, so we would take it back up again at the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay. I'm okay with that. I'm fine.
And, and my substitute suggestion was that if you had certain things, and you did have, you do have certain things that you listed, that maybe that'd be looked at or, or not. So that would be the board decision, of course.
Yeah, and I'd also just add that if we're going to, to do that, you know, submit anything, my reason for seconding the, the motion that will be looked at later is certainly not personal. It's that I answer to the residents of Stafford County. And following the last meeting, there were a lot of questions, a lot of chatter, a lot of confusion. And I think we owe it, I, I know, I owe it to my constituents and certainly the county that I represent, to answer to those and make sure that there is no appearance of, of any conflict of interest by any of us on this board at any given time. And I, I think that that is only fair. So I would certainly hand over many questions, concerns, inquiries that I've received as well when we're looking at this.
And I will withdraw my motion. We'll keep it on as information, and we'll have to take it up again in two weeks.
All right. No further discussion on this matter?
No, ma'am.
But I do, but I do think, just quickly, I think the governance, we still, we still have the governance. I think the governance should actually look at the process that you described, because the same thing could be said for real estate agents that, right? The same thing could be said of, maybe I own a paper company and we're ordering paper, right?
So it wouldn't be on the board to order paper.
Right.
But, okay.
Well, you know, so, I mean, you get the point. It shouldn't just be for, I think it should be a process that if we have, in a policy, looked at by a lawyer, that's all. I'm, I'm not trying to sugarcoat it, and I'm not trying, I'm just trying to move forward with something, then hey, we'll see it next week. And then what are we going to do next week? So we do have to have a kind of a way forward on, what are we going to do about this? You know, not this, but this issue. Okay, thanks.
All right, the announcement of our next meeting is going to be August 29th. Is that correct, Ms. Hall, at 5:30? Is that our work session?
Work session.
That's the work session.
The work session?
Yeah, it's August 29th. Ms. Egan straightened me out, right? It is August 29th.
Unless you're planning on going to your middle school.
I am not. The wife is going to the middle school, and she's, I'll get yelled at later for that.
And then the next regular meeting of the school board is September 11th at 7:00, unless we have a work session scheduled earlier. All right, we are adjourned. There's no closed session tonight.